Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. Little things different tonight, I'm going to start up here. We have a bunch of great recognition and some proclamations to read, so I want to take the opportunity to do that here. We're going to start off tonight first with a proclamation recognizing Adult Education Week. Whereas the city of Waterville recognizes the importance of education in fostering personal growth, community development, and economic opportunity; and whereas the Mid-Maine Regional Adult Education Program serves as a vital resource for individuals seeking to enhance their skills, pursue lifelong learning, and achieve their educational goals; whereas over 150 learners enroll annually in the Mid-Maine Regional Adult Education Program, seeking to support a, to qualify for a better-paying job and more fulfilling jobs, pursue post-secondary education, or improve their English language skills; and whereas the Mid-Maine Regional Adult Education offers six specialized programs: High School Diploma, High Set, Main College and Career Access, Adult Transition, Workforce Training, and English for Speakers of Other Languages, designed to assist learners in achieving their specific goals of employment and college readiness; and whereas Mid-Maine Regional Adult Education serves as a welcoming getaway for new Mainers from over ten countries, helping them integrate into the community; and whereas the dedicated educators and staff of Mid-Maine Regional Educational work tirelessly to provide accessible, high-quality educational opportunities tailored to diverse needs of our community; and whereas the pursuit of education empowers individuals, strengthens families, and enriches our community, contributing to a vibrant, informed, and engaged citizenry. I now, I Michael Morris as Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the City Council and residents of Waterville, do hereby proclaim the week of September 16th through September 20th, 2024 as Adult Education Week.[491.44][491.44][applause] We have a couple of folks, Hannah and Tekeah from the Mid-Maine Regional Adult Education. Okay. Now we have some other recognition, and these are, this is always the fun stuff, you know, and we're here to recognize, you know, a couple of our officers for some work that they've done out in the field. You know, I think it's, I can only speak for myself, and I can speak for my son too, like, you know, when you're a kid and you're like, you want to be like three things, you want to be a fireman, you want to be a police officer or a soldier, and then you kind of grow up and you realize what they do, and you're like, no, forget it, I'm just going to work at a bank for 30 years. So, I certainly appreciate all the work that happens that the men and women of both our public safety and the Fire Department, the Police Department do on a daily basis, you know, for the citizens of the city. It's oftentimes very thankless work, but these are the great things to be able to recognize, the stuff that actually happens. So, I hereby formally recognize and commend Officer Jake Whitley and Officer Michaela Hodge for their exemplary actions during a critical domestic violence incident on June 4th, 2023, at the Holiday Inn on Main Street in Waterville. Upon receiving a distress call, Officer Whitley promptly arrived on the scene where he found the female victim in grave danger. Being strangled by a male assailant, demonstrating remarkable coverage, Officer Whitley intervened, risking his own safety to save the victim. Despite facing violent resistance from the assailant who attempted to disarm him, Officer Whitley maintained his composure. Officer Hodge, recognizing the urgency of the situation, quickly arrived to assist Officer Whitley. Together, they subdued the assailant using a taser and OC spray, ensuring that, ensuring the safety of the victim. Officer Hodge also displayed exceptional awareness by coordinating medical assistance for the injured woman, who subsequently transported to the hospital for serious injuries. Thanks to their swift and decisive actions, the assailant was charged with multiple serious offenses, including aggravated attempted murder and domestic violence and domestic violence aggravated assault. Now therefore, I, Michael Morris as Mayor of Waterville, Maine, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Waterville, do hereby recognize Officer Jake Whitley and Officer Michaela Hodge for their bravery and putting their own lives at risk to save another.[673.73][673.73][applause] Have you both come up?
We also have these certificates and some uniform pins for them from the Police Department, so.
With us in attendance is the victim in this case, and she would like to come up and say a few words.
Hello, my name's Nicole Bernhardt. Officer Whitley and Officer Hodge were there for me in the most terrifying and vulnerable moment of my life. There really are no words to express the amount of gratitude you have to people who literally saved your life, and I cannot thank you enough. There are not enough thank yous in this world, but I thank you, my family thanks you, my children thank you for putting yourselves in a potentially life-threatening situation. Yeah, you saved me, and I just can't thank you enough, so thank you.[802.18][802.18][applause]
All right, now I would like to call Chief, Chief Barney up, we have some other awards to pass out. I'll let him explain.
That's a really tough act to follow. So, we started this award program at the Police Department because, for a couple of reasons. One is, everybody that's out here tonight should be recognized for the good work that they do, but it's also, has been pointed out by at least one counselor, Councilor Kleepack, it's also incredibly important for this body to know what the officers do, and for the citizens to know what the officers and dispatchers do every day. And so, I have several instances here tonight that you probably didn't read about in the paper, but greatly impacted the lives of our citizens. And so, incredibly, incredibly important. So, in the dispatch world, I started my career as a dispatcher, and never had the honor of getting a stork pin, but in the dispatch world, getting a stork pin is when you help deliver a baby using emergency medical dispatch protocols. And so, it's kind of a great honor to do that, that's a big deal. And so, tonight, we are honoring one of our dispatchers who had the opportunity to do that. I can tell that she's very embarrassed back there, but she shouldn't be, she should be proud. So, on October 18th, 2023, at 2:21 a.m., dispatcher Brooke Cunningham answered 911 for a resident in the city of Waterville, who stated his wife was having a baby and the foot was out. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Cunningham was able to navigate the caller through the birthing emergency medical dispatch protocols and instructions as the baby was born before EMS arrived and could take over. The baby and mother were transported to the hospital by Waterville Rescue. So, great job, Brooke, come on up and get your stork.[926.37][926.37][applause] All right, this award is going to an officer. On January 6th, 2024, Waterville PD and Fire were requested to respond to Hannaford for a male on the ground unresponsive. Detective Paul Hee arrived before Waterville Fire and Rescue and took over CPR from the 911 caller. He continued CPR and delivered two defibrillations with the store's AED until EMS arrived. The patient was transferred to Main Medical Center and then discharged nearly two weeks later. Paul? Next, we have dispatcher Shelby Doughty. On January 1st, 2023, at 5:19 a.m., dispatcher Shelby Doughty answered 911 for a 38-year-old female who was reportedly not breathing on Ticonic Street in Waterville. She provided the caller with EMD instructions to move the patient while she toned Waterville Fire and Rescue. CPR instructions were given and started by the caller for 10 minutes. Rescue units arrived to find the patient to be in ventricular tachycardia and abnormal cardiac rhythm, likely because of respiratory arrest. The patient was stabilized and transported to a local hospital. The patient was subsequently transferred to Main Medical Center and then discharged seven days later, completely neurologically intact with normal cardiac output and function. Great job, come on up Shelby. All right, Shelby's going to stay up here because she's got two more, one in October of '23 and one in January of '24. On October 5th of 2023, at 6:59 p.m., dispatcher Shelby Doughty answered 911 for a resident in Waterville that overdosed and was unconscious and barely breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Doughty was able to determine the patient was not breathing and walked the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over and administer naloxone. The patient was transported to Main General Thayer Hospital and later discharged.[1102.58][1102.58][applause] Once again, Shelby Doughty, on January 29th, 2024, at 7:29 p.m., dispatcher Shelby Doughty answered 911 for a customer that collapsed in the Waterville Walmart store and was unconscious and not breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Doughty walked the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions for six minutes until EMS arrived and could take over. EMS was able to resuscitate the patient and transport her to the hospital where she was sitting up and talking. By the time EMS left the hospital, she was later discharged.[1143.74][1143.74][applause] All right. On July 3rd, 2023, at 8:46 a.m., dispatcher Tanaya Duty answered 911 for a resident in the city of Waterville, reporting his brother had overdosed and was turning blue. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Duty was able to walk the caller through compressions for three minutes using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient regained consciousness and refused transport to the hospital. Tanaya? All right, Tanaya's going to stay up here while we do another one. On September 10th of '23, at 1:11 p.m., dispatcher Duty answered 911 for a resident in the town of Waterville, saying she believed her husband has overdosed. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Duty was able to walk the caller through compressions for three minutes, again this time, using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was given Narcan and revived. Again, the patient refused transport to the hospital, but great job, Tanaya.[1236.41][1236.41][applause] Another CPR chain of survival save goes to Keisha Blaisdell. On July 18th, 2023, at 4:22 p.m., dispatcher Keisha Blaisdell answered 911 for a resident in the city of Waterville for a friend who had overdosed and was not breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Blaisdell was able to walk the caller through compressions for seven minutes using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to Main General Thayer and give it, and a rhythm was later, sorry, a rhythm was gotten back and later discharged. Keisha? All right, so Keisha's up here for two more. On September 4th, 2023, at 3:39 p.m., Keisha Blaisdell answered 911 for a resident in the city of Waterville for his daughter who was unresponsive in a vehicle slumped over. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Blaisdell was able to walk the caller through compressions for eight minutes using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to Main General Thayer Hospital after getting a rhythm back and later discharged. On May 22nd, 2024, at 7:50 a.m., dispatcher Keisha Blaisdell answered 911 for a resident in the town of China who was requesting, excuse me, who was requesting an ambulance for her husband that was non-responsive. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Blaisdell was able to determine the patient had agonal breathing and talked the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to the hospital after getting a rhythm back and has since been released and is back home.[1376.42][1376.42][applause] All right, next we have dispatcher Gilman, who on August 14th, 2023, at 11:06 a.m., answered 911 for a resident in the city of Waterville at the Animal Hospital. A female had collapsed and stopped breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Gilman was able to walk the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to Inland Hospital and has since been extubated, doing well, and will be getting further medical treatment. She was discharged from a rehab center and is now home. Addie? All right, so we have two more for Addie. On January 6th of 2024, at 12:28 p.m., dispatcher Addie Gilman answered 911 for a customer who collapsed in an aisle at Hannaford in the city of Waterville and was turning purple. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Gilman was able to determine that the patient was not breathing and walked the caller through AED instructions until Detective Heath arrived and could take over CPR. After EMS determined this was an overdose and administered naloxone, the patient then became responsive, refusing transport to the hospital. Great job, Addie. On February 7th, 2024, at 1:19 p.m., dispatcher Addie Gilman answered 911 for a resident in the town of Winslow that had hysterectomy surgery the day before and was unresponsive and gasping for air. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Gilman was able to determine that the patient was not breathing and walked the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions for seven minutes until EMS arrived and could take over. After EMS determined this was an overdose and administered naloxone, the patient then became responsive, refusing transport to the hospital. Great job, Addie. For this one, Keisha is going to have to take over on the phone. So, on November 8th, 2023, at 10:25 p.m., dispatcher Ryan Karaganes answered 911 for a resident in the town of China that was having a diabetic emergency and unresponsive. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Karaganes was able to determine that the patient was not breathing and started to walk the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions for 11 minutes until EMS arrived and was able to get a rhythm back and transported the patient to the hospital, who was later discharged. Ryan, come on up. I believe that the next one is not here, but I'm going to read it aloud anyway. On November 14th, 2023, at 4:04 p.m., dispatcher Jenna Davies answered 911 for a resident in the town of Waterville that was actively seizing, then became unresponsive and agonal breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Davies was able to determine that the patient was not breathing and walked the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions for four minutes until EMS arrived and was able to get a rhythm back and transported the patient to the hospital, and the patient was later discharged. Great job, Jenna. On February 15th, 2024, at 1:53 a.m., dispatcher Jacqueline Bean answered 911 for a resident in the town of Waterville who believed her mother had overdosed and was not breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Bean was able to walk the caller through compressions using the EMD protocols and instructions until EMS arrived and could take over and administer naloxone. The patient was transported to Main General Thayer and, after becoming responsive, was later discharged. So, good job, Jackie, come on up. Thank you all for bearing with us on those. The next time we come back, we will have probably fewer awards because we'll be coming back more often with these awards, but again, I think it's very important for you folks back here and the citizens of Waterville to know what these folks are doing. That's a lot of lives saved and a lot of differences made, so thank you.[1695.00][1695.00][applause]
That was fantastic. Congratulations again to all of you, that was awesome. All right, first up is, we are now at Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as it is.
All right, and any disclosure of, disclosure of conflicts of interest about any of the votes that any of the councils will take tonight? Seeing none. All right, we're going to move right on to a presentation. Tonight, we have the K-9 program presented by Sergeant Ryandons, more.
He just went out to get the dog, so he'll be right in.
Ooh, props, cool.
I'd rather be the dog.
Yeah?
I'm a little confused on where to stand here. I got folks here and they're folks here, so I'll just kind of split the difference.
I don't know if they'll be able to hear you over the... If they'll hear you over... Probably just speak at the microphone.
I'll talk loud. I'm Sergeant Ryan Dinsmore, working for Police Department, currently as K-9 handler. This is K-9 Riggs. He's a mixed breed, half German Shepherd, half Belgian Malinois. He's been working with me for about two and a half years. Sadly, it's taken us this long to get here in front of you guys. It was a long time ago that we asked to do this. You guys committed and here we are, a highly successful K-9 program to this day and hope to have him for quite a long time and continue in that vein. Just wanted to give everybody here an opportunity to see him, see what he does for a little bit of work and to just talk about him, answer general questions if anybody has any as we're going along, so. Yeah, so we've gone through 14 weeks of patrol training, which is essentially where we learn obedience, we learn to track, there's some apprehension stuff built in there, and then we also work on building searches. Then we just finished up last year with eight weeks of training in drug detection. Currently imprinted on four drugs, highly successful since he's come out with that, so he's really helping the community, not just in drug detection, but also in his patrol work as well. Touch. He wants his tug. He doesn't want to work for food. Down. Sit. Jup. Oh, man. So Riggs, he works for food. He doesn't eat out of a bowl at home like your normal dogs. Down. Very vocal, very vocal. He thinks he runs a show, sometimes he does. So what you're seeing me doing here is unrewarding him for his behavior. When I give him a command and he does it, has completed, he gets paid and so what I was talking about, he's rewarded, he's fed. Quiet. He's fed through work. Sometimes that work is obedience, sometimes that work is tracking, where I'll lay a track where if I'm working, I'll have one of the other officers lay a track. Down. And on the completion of that... Quiet. He's seen a lot of people. On completion of that track, he gets rewarded. Sometimes it's food, sometimes it's via his favorite toy here, the tug, sometimes the ball. The reward varies. We have to keep the dogs guessing all the time. If they get used to... Quiet. Sit. If they get used to just a food-based reward system, you know, he's going to start to figure that out, his performance may decline, so you always have to keep them guessing. They're dogs are cheaters, they're like little kids, you know? The quickest way to the reward, you know? So we always have to keep them guessing. Good. Good boy, huh? Please. You? Good man. Please. He's very high-strung, very high-strung. You come from Slovakia? A lot of kennels here in the US will import their dogs from Eastern European countries. The bloodlines are just a lot more pure. What happens is when you get a dog like Riggs over here, especially if they're intact, some places will breed them with a shepherd maybe from the States, and so you start to water down that bloodline. So they try and get them right from the best stock in Eastern Europe, and I mean, he's been fantastic. We've had numerous successful tracks with missing folks, and we'll get into that later, and multiple finds on detection work. He's been a great asset to our department and the guys, girls, they love working with him, will set up scenarios and stuff like that to keep his skills sharp and ours as well. Jup. So we train, do a little white work with the tug here. He, again, this is his favorite toy. He won't let go of it until I ask him to do it. Sometimes when I ask him to do it, he doesn't listen, you know? Again, he likes to be the boss. He and my wife really fight for that role, so I just let him win. No sense in fighting, I like it. Good. Good man. Good. So, any questions thus far at all?
Is he like... Can he actually attack like unsullied or something?
I'm sorry?
Does he actually attack like unsullied or something?
He is trained for white work, yes. Yeah, so he does criminal apprehension, which doesn't include that, yes.
Could we have him like do a demonstration? Have him go over there?
I was actually looking at Council McCormick's sleeve, and that looks just like a bike sleeve, so.
Looks are deceiving.
Good man. Anything else?
Does he go with you?
He does, yeah. And he's not like a normal dog, he's too high-strung. He has a 10x10 covered 10x10 with a nice insulated shelter. He lives out there over 90 degrees. He comes inside, I have a little setup for him, under 25, he comes inside, so we keep him comfortable. But that 10x10 is his, he loves it, and you know, if you start bringing him inside, you can notice a decline in performance when a dog gets too much attention. So we primarily just keep him for a working purpose, and you know, he gets love every once in a while, the wife will sneak out to pet him, but... Anything else?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Cool. I'm going to bring him back out, and we'll have more for you later on tonight.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the City Manager Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
First up, a Fire Department leadership announcement. So as everyone should know by now, Chief Essler is moving on to be the next State Fire Marshal. And so we do have a vacancy in the position of Fire Chief as of October 4th. And so I'm really pleased to announce tonight that I am appointing Jason Frost, our Deputy Chief, to be the next Fire Chief for the city of Waterville. Jason has 24 years of experience in the fire service. He's been with us here as Deputy Chief for the last about three years. He was also Deputy Chief in Scowhegan previously. He has some big shoes to fill, but I'm extremely confident that he's going to be able to continue on all the great work happening in the Fire Department and the excellent work culture that Chief Essler has helped establish. And so just really pleased to be appointing Jason Frost, our next Fire Chief for the city of Waterville. I think we're in very good hands. And again, just another thank you to Chief Essler for all of his leadership and his dedication to the city. Again, really big shoes to fill, but the chief is not going too far, and we'll still be seeing him, so we really appreciate all of his efforts, and we'll have more recognition of him as we approach his final departure date. So Deputy Chief, if you have a few words you maybe want to say, that would be great.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Brian. Chief Essler?
Thank you.
Humbled and honored to have a chance to lead this fine department. As you know, this department has come a long ways in the last, well, since this man has taken over, and he does leave huge shoes to fill. I'm not sure if I can fill them completely, but I can be me, and I'm going to give it my best shot to see what we can do. It's crazy because two and a half years ago when I came to this department, I had spent my whole career in one other department. And you worry when you go from department to department, what's that going to look like? Am I going to lose that family feeling, that family atmosphere? Because the Fire Department is nothing but a big family. I guess I had nothing to worry about. From day one, it has been nothing but good things. I felt welcomed into the department, I felt welcomed into the city, and the family atmosphere was definitely there. But that is because of the steadfast guidance of Chief Essler. He brought that atmosphere, he brings a family-first atmosphere, and he brings that pride and duty atmosphere that we have at the Waterville Fire Department. So I am excited moving forward. I'm excited to be part of this progressive, forward-thinking Fire Department, and I'm also excited for Chief Essler, and I want to say congratulations to him. That's a big deal, moving up to the Fire Marshal's office. But for us here in the city of Waterville, we now have a very big advocate for the fire service at one of the highest spots in the state, so we're actually in pretty good shape. So, thank you, Chief, for everything you've done for me, I appreciate it. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, councilors, for this opportunity.
I'd like to welcome some other new incoming staff. Denise Bustamante will be starting as our new Customer Service Manager in City Hall officially on October 18th. I would also like to welcome Erica Miller, who started her position as our Administrative Assistant in the Public Works Department. And also I'd like to welcome Chris Leyland, who's our new Administrative Assistant in the Code Enforcement Department, and she started her position last Monday. So we wish them all much success here with the city for many years to come. My next session of City Managers' Open Office Hours will be October 22nd, 3:35. Working on a location, it could be the South Enteneen Center, we're talking with them about getting down there, which should be great, but of course, all Waterville residents, local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend and share all of their thoughts, views, and concerns. A couple of events I just want to recap on. First, working with, as I mentioned, Melanie Weiss and Rabbi Isaacs on a Sukkah in Castangway Square. We now have dates, it is going to be put up on October 16th, and it'll be there until October 23rd, probably, maybe the 24th. Encouraging everyone to participate in those community art project sessions going on around the city, that artwork will be displayed during that time. So again, this is the first of its kind that we know of in the state of Maine, and from what they tell me, there are not many that happen around the country, so this is a real honor for the city of Waterville to host this. Again, October 16th, the Sukkah will be going up in Castangway Square. Thank you to all who came out and participated in our first Comprehensive Plan Public Comment Session. We have another one scheduled on October 10th, 6 PM, right here at the City Hall Annex. All Waterville residents are encouraged to attend and share their thoughts of what the next 10 years should look like for the city of Waterville. So please come out to that, again, October 10th, 6 PM, right here in this room. I also just want to recognize that the Firefighters Convention, the 60th Annual, was held here in Waterville last weekend, had a really interesting event, so thank you to all the firefighters from around the state who came to downtown Waterville and had their convention here. Appleton Street, I've mentioned that this project is wrapping up, we have some light poles left to do, we have some utility boxes to paint, but we should be totally done with everything by mid-October, and we are planning sort of save-the-date community celebration onsite Friday, October 18th at 3:00 PM. More details will be coming forward about that, but please hold the date, October 18th, 3:00 PM, for our community celebration at Appleton Street. I just want to thank our Public Works Department, who recently did some major cleanup efforts down at Heta Falls, the former encampment location. There was quite a bit of work required there, and I just want to commend them for their efforts there, it was quite a job, so thank you to our Public Works Department for their work there. And lastly, just please enroll in our city mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreealerts.com. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring Sergeant Dinsmore back up to finish your new duty presentation. You had... There was... Sorry, Deck, no?
That's later on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
That was part of the presentation?
It's later on.
Close to the end.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, well, we're moving on then. Okay, we are moving on to councillor comments and committee reports. Any councillors have any comments or committee reports this evening? Councilor McCormick?
It's a small one, but I want to thank Public Works, they just replaced a swingset out on Grove Street Park. The last couple of years, they've repainted the basketball court, we got new equipment, we finally got the swingset replaced. It's small, but it's appreciated. The people in the neighborhood are going to get a lot of use out of that.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other councillor comments, I'm going to introduce a couple of folks we see down over here. These are two members of the newly-appointed Waterville Youth Council. We have Riviera Hernandez and Joshua Schmizel, and they're going to give us an update as to what they've done thus far in the short time that they've been in post.
Hi, everyone. My name is Riviera Hernandez. I'm a sophomore at Waterville Senior High School, and I live in Wards 3 and Ward 4.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joshua Schmizel, and I'm also a sophomore at Waterville Senior High School, and I live in Ward 6.
So we're representatives from the Waterville Youth Council, and we recently had our first meeting, as well as an orientation towards the end of the summer. During the orientation, we introduced ourselves and discussed what we believe makes good leaders. We also discussed what we would like to see in leaders that represent us and issues in the community we would like to learn more about. Afterwards, we had a presentation from Brian Kenrath, where he talked with us about the Waterville government and how we work as a community. Later, we talked with Police Officer Rob Booley from the Waterville Police Department, listening and discussing each other's view of our city. And lastly, went to the Waterville Shump Center and participated in an art project for the municipal Sukkah run by Serena Samborn, the Education Outreach Coordinator from Waterville Creeds. The art project focused on community and diversity in family and their traditions.
On Monday, September 9th, we had our first official meeting. Our group sat down with the mayor of Waterville, Mike Morris, and Ward 6 councillor Breehan Finch, and Waterville Youth Council Advisor Jessica Graham. We discussed different areas of interest for education and community service, shared ideas we had formulated at our orientation, and broke into groups to discuss those ideas further. In addition to that, we learned the basics of parliamentary procedure and how city council meetings are run. At the Youth Council's next meeting, we are hoping to streamline our meeting process, lay out some group rules, and finalize our goals for the year.
Awesome, thank you very much. So yeah, super excited to have these two representatives here today. The goal is to have them at least all show up at least once during the meetings, you know, sit there, participate in the discussion. They don't vote on anything, but again, just to get an opportunity to kind of see or hear perspectives, you know, from the youth of the community, so, welcome. Okay, moving on to public comments. Any public comments? Anyone here for public comment this evening? See, Patty, do we have anybody online?
No hands raised.
Wonderful, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get to say, I have an amendment to the amendment.
Mic, microphone?
Just a minor change in the last item. Pendleton should be Pelton, David Pelton.
Okay, I can make those corrections and...
Great, thank you, yeah.
So moved as amended?
Moved as amended, yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, all those in favor of the amendment? Thank you. And we're done with that one, right? We're good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to read by title only, please?
Motion to read by title only, second.
And roll call?
Don't need a roll call. All those in favor?
That's what I mean.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't see them here today.
We're good?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Old Business Resolution 124, 2024.
Approve an access agreement Airport Road.
Move to that.
Second.
Yes, please, thank you.
So councillors, as you remember, we had this item before us a little bit ago, it is still on the table, and so it's been our city corps' recommendation and staff's recommendation that something needs to happen with it. We have had no further updates or contacts from either Mr. St. Peter or the solar company Novel Energy. So at this point, I think it's the recommendation to at this time, and definitely postpone this item as it is sitting on the table, and it appears, at least from a communication standpoint, that there's been nothing further from the applicant.
Perfect. Mayor? Josh Dinsmore?
I've heard from him in quite, in a lot of detail, for probably over an hour. He is still interested in purchasing the land, so I think that we should make one more attempt to try to get ahold of him.
And just so everyone knows, both the mayor and myself have reached out to him and have not gotten a response, not back.
Hmm. It's curious that he's responded to me.
All right.
Motion to table, or you want a motion to suspend?
I think for the purpose of this, and because, again, this was, this is an access agreement for the, with the solar company and not the purchase, so I think for this particular item, I think we're okay to, and this doesn't preclude any other conversations that he wants to engage in or any other business. So, yeah, I would entertain a motion to table indefinitely.
Motion to table indefinitely. Second.
All those in favor? Wonderful, thank you.
Anyone opposed? Yes.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 174, 2024.
Authorize the renewal of a marijuana retail license to Jennifer Dunham, doing business as Bobby Buds.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so this was before us last time. There was a vote, then we reconsidered to table, which is where we are this evening. Councillor Gagnon, that was your request to table, so I will kick it off to you. Do you have anything to add or to this point?
I was just hoping that the parties would be able to get together and, you know, work something out between the two of you. And if that hasn't happened, then I suppose we're back to where we were last week.
Any other councillors have anything they would like to say at this point?
So, I'm just wondering if Jennifer Dunham is here tonight?
She's not acting on her. I'm acting on her behalf. We couldn't find a sitter.
Okay, but she is the owner of the license, correct?
Of the license, right. However, again, I'm just not sure why this was even a thing, that complaints were never on the actual business or the owner. There was always people in the parking lot of that location, Urban Garden Center, Erica's and Booley's. And since our last meeting, I've tried everything I can to try to resolve. I had meetings with the sergeant. I've had meetings with the district attorneys, trying to figure out what's going on. I've had meetings with lawyers. I've done everything I can. They still refuse to talk to me at all. I've done everything, but, again, I don't understand why it ever came this far. We didn't break any laws. We didn't break any ordinances. Every complaint was at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon for a commercial-zoned business that was playing music too loud. And apparently, I read in the newspaper that there was an out-of-control dog, which is completely not true. I could go get the puppy that I was speaking of, and he's well on his way to as well-trained as their dog is. And, like, I've been working very extensively with him, and, again, no laws were broken. And if we were on any other business, if I was an audio installer, you would hear music all day long. If I was a mechanic, you would hear grinding and banging all day long. At 3:00 in the morning, every morning, the train goes by and blows its horn and bangs those cars at 3:00 in the morning, every morning. Not one complaint was made outside of the noise ordinance. I just, again, I'm not sure why it ever came this far. We didn't break any laws or any ordinances. Like, we're a business. It's my job to get attention and be the only one that somebody comes to, or with the seven other of them that are stacked on top of each other. You know what I mean? Like, I started crunching some numbers, and I know how much I bring for revenue for this city, and it's just preposterous that we've been, you know, doing deliveries and working around everything for the last two weeks because of this holdup. Like, we've been here seven years. We've given the city a lot of money. We've been through so much stuff. We've been through robberies. We've been through attempted robberies. I've been held up at night point. Like, and, again, a lot of the complaints were us calling for help, or Urban Garden Center calling for somebody in the parking lot. And I wish the sergeant was here that I had a meeting with. He's not, and I apologize, but he could contest to this. Sir, I saw you raise your hand.
Councillor Gagnon?
So, you and the neighbors have not gotten together between last week, last meeting and this one?
I tried. They're here. And like they said last meeting, I did try before that, and they said no.
You want to go out and lobby and work something out?
It's not going to be worked out. He's using it. He's using the music.
Ma'am, I apologize. You need to come to the microphone so that people can hear you.
And tell us who you are.
He has weaponized...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you, just, who are you and where do you...
My name is Deborah Pollan.
Thank you, Deborah.
I work at, work. I live at 3 Big U Street.
Thank you.
Okay? I'm on the opposite end of the building than the young couple. They, I should say, they have been subjected to him. He backs his vehicle in. Normally, he'll park straight. When he is weaponizing his music, he backs it in, up to the fence. They're 10 feet away, and he has a woofer in the trunk. He opens that up and blasts it. I'm in my apartment, and my ears are throbbing, okay? I went up. I videotaped because we had tried talking to him. Then, we had called the cops, and it started out first with him going after some woman up there with a piece of wood. He didn't touch her, but he was threatening her with it. She was screaming bloody murder, and everybody from our street, the street across the road, Casey's, Urban Garden, man that owns that, has asked him to keep his personal stuff personal. Don't do this as a business. And he does what he wants. He's trying to say that he's talked to everybody in the apartment. He has not, I've talked to everybody. He has not. I talked to him when I went up and videotaped exactly what was going on. He told me, oh, I respect you, and I respect your partner. I forget his name, so he's going to turn it off, because I was right there. And then he said, but I'm going to keep on doing it. I'm driving them out. I did it before. I'm going to do it again. That's what he is doing. There was a maintenance person that was working at Urban Gardens and asked him, what's going on? This was a different day. And he goes, oh, I'm driving them out. He's using his music to blast them, and it's affecting everyone in the neighborhood, in the community, the people across the road. He was fighting with some blond woman, blue car, and you can check with the police reports. And he was the one that was causing all the ruckus, and that's why people were calling the cops. And I tried talking to him. I asked him, is there something that we can, you know, figure out so make this stop? You know, there's no need of it. And he says, nope, there's nothing. I'm going to drive them out. And that's what he said. We had the parade Saturday. After they went by, you know, they had the sirens and whatnot. They go by. Five minutes later, he's out there blasting his music out in his parking lot, screaming, I put in $30,000 in taxes. I'm a business. They're not going to touch me. And on and on and on. That, I called. That was about 45 minutes straight. And then, prior to that, he would do it half an hour and stop. Then, he did it later that day, another 15 minutes. Again, some hours go by, and he does it again. I have, my parents are in their 80s. They try to come over and visit, and they can't stay. They can't. They're, my mother has hearing aids, as it is, okay? I watch my grandson. He's like, he likes that kind of music, but it's like screaming and blaring. We've got two-year-olds. We've got ill people on the, on the town, on the street. There's other young kids on the other side, and there's no end to it. Today, he did it twice. He knew he was coming here. He's like, he thinks he rules because he brings in tax money. Oh, I didn't know.
Councillor Gagnon?
You can continue talking if you want, but I really think, you know, we've heard enough about, about all of this issue. And I personally just wanted to give people the opportunity to get back together again, and that hasn't happened, so I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other councillors wish to say anything at this point?
No.
No?
I guess I will. I mean, I'm just concerned that, about the pattern that we've seen in, in not heating requests to turn the music down and to cause disturbances in the neighborhood. The fact that the owner of the business isn't here, your license was revoked and, and she took it over, but it seems like you're actually still operating the business, so I, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this one.
Anyone else? First vote, this is a roll call, I mean, I, all those in favor?
So, all those in favor of approving the license? Any opposed?
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to ordinance, let me see, ordinance 179, 2024. Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, 179, 2024.
Where is 179?
Amend zoning ordinance apartments, commercial zones.
Just before New Business.
Do you have that? I don't see 179. Thank you. Amend the zoning ordinance apartments and commercial zones.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any, this is a second reading. Any discussion? Seeing councillor, councillor Green?
So, I, I did discuss my concerns with councillor Finch a little bit. I, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I think that we should take a look at the impact of this, particularly because, I guess Anne's not here, right? But, in just in looking at the nuances of it, we're approving, we're approving housing in every commercial zone. Currently, it's in, in the commercial A only, and that's limited within the downtown region to second-floor apartments, so, I, yeah, I think, I think this warrants another look at some point, but I am interested in seeing if this actually does spur some housing development that would be, of course, good for the city.
Yeah, and I'll just add...
Go ahead. I'll get my, I'll put mine in. Go ahead.
Sorry. I just want to say, we did also discuss the idea of, of kind of doing something more broader with zoning, bringing more people to the table, and not trying to just ad hoc this kind of one zoning change at a time, and kind of actually looking at it comprehensively across the city.
Councilor McCormick?
I know she had other obligations, but I really would like to have Ms. Beveridge here to answer a few questions, and I would move to table this one, so we could look at it a little bit more.
I thought of orders. Can't speak to a motion unless...
Or postpone. Want to postpone this?
I would like to postpone this, have Ms. Beveridge here, so we can get the answers we're looking for, and not rush to, Ms. Green brought it up, you know, what she's telling me is she's kind of waffling on it a little bit herself. I would like to have Ms. Beveridge here, look at it, and answer the questions, and move from there. So, if we can postpone this one, it ain't going anywhere. We're not rushing to...
Okay?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
But this is, can we just add that this is, we're postponing to a date certain next meeting?
Next meeting.
October 1st.
October 1st. October 1st? Yeah.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of postponing this item until the first meeting in October? All those opposed? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilor McCormick. Moving on to New Business. Resolution 182, 2024.
Appointing members to the planning board. Move to adopt?
Second.
All right. So, recently, we had a couple of folks that had stepped down. We had a couple of folks that have stepped up, and we are going to go ahead and discuss that. So, any...
Can you just let us know who's stepped down?
So, Tom Nail Senior is stepping up to complete a term that's going to expire in 2026, and Scott Beal is going to fill a term that is going to expire in 2028. We spread, we separate them so they don't all expire at the same time.
Right. And this is openings left by?
Matt and April.
Okay.
They both resigned.
Right. Was it, is it Hillary? Hillary? Wasn't Matt's position filled?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, Hillary's was filled.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Councillor McCormick?
He is Thomas Nail.
Thomas Nail.
Thomas with a D.
No.
I'm looking at his application.
I don't know, I'm looking at the resolution.
I think it was misspelling on the application.
All right, I just was checking.
Thank you.
Maybe that was, he told me earlier that he was a little bit deaf.
No. He's fine. All right. All those in favor? Awesome, thank you very much. And I believe, Patty, if we're going to go ahead and just appoint them now so they can get to work, because I know we have a meeting coming up.
Yes, please.
So, thank you both, gentlemen.
Could I ask you to raise your right hands, please? I state your name.
I, Scott Beal.
Thomas Nail Senior.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
What's that?
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me...
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a planning board member...
As a planning board member.
For the city of Waterville.
For the city of Waterville.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Resolution 183, 2024.
Move to adopt. Second.
Can I read it? I'm sorry. Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Buena Petito, La Mexicana Incorporated, doing business as Buena Petito.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
We have...
Oh, yes.
You got two here. Can I give...
Can I give some clarification? What's the difference between the two?
One is a liquor license and one is a vitriloquist's license?
They both say liquor license.
Yeah.
Oh, they do? Well, I guess.
One is beer and wine, and the other one is high alcohol.
Yeah. We can make an amendment.
Yeah, yeah. We can amend that, right? Like, we can, yeah, that's fine. So when we read this, we can do that. So what we're going to do now is we're going to do the liquor license now. We will do the vitriloquist's license at the next one, okay? For all those who may have differing votes. So, all those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Resolution 184, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Buena Apetito Las Mexicana Incorporated, doing business as Buena Apetito.
Move to adopt.
Second.
So can we make an amendment to change this to a vitriloquist's license?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment?
And move it as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And then we need to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion with regard to this, or no? Seeing none, can I get a vote, please? Yeah, all those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Resolution 185, 2024.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to the president and trustees of Colby College, doing business as Colby College, Joseph Family Spa.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 186, 2024.
Yes. I see a hand raised online, and I'm not sure which item they wished to speak on. I just noticed the hand raised.
Okay.
Norma, can you hear us? I don't know which item you wish to speak on.
Hi, yes, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me? I just want to clarify for the record that it is Buena Apetito Las Mexicanas. There is an S at the end of Mexicana.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time. Sorry for being there.
Thank you. All right, so we're adding an S. All right, we good?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on again to Resolution 186, 2024.
Approve bid award to United Construction and Forestry for a loader replacement public works.
We didn't know.
Did we finish the vote on B? Did we actually vote?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did.
So is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion, questions with regard to this item? Counsel Agnew?
Just wondering if, if we could review whether the bid came in within budget.
Right, so you have a memo here, Department of Budget, $230,000 for this piece of equipment, and the bid being presented here is $213,500.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 187, 2024.
Approve waiver of bid process for the purchase of a compact tractor and equipment.
And Brian, what's the significance of waiving the bid process?
That was, I think, to go after a specific piece of equipment. So you have, you have a memo here, if you'd like, I just will read it. We budget 37 to 5 for a compact tractor. MTE Equipment during New Hampshire provided a quote for a Ventrack tractor, tough cut mower, power bucket attachments for 37 to 5. Pricing includes a 7% municipal discount. MTE is the only Ventrack vendor in Maine with representation, so that would be the big reason. Unlike, unlike most compact tractors, the Ventrack is extremely versatile with 35 available attachments, mowing, digging, sweeping, plowing, snowblowing. Be a valuable addition to the park's fleet. Funding will come from the cemetery investment fund. So again, it's because of, Ventrack's the only vendor in Maine with representation.
I think was Matt was trying to get us more bang for our buck than just going for a compact tractor. You got something with a whole lot of implements.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the bang of the buck that I'm concerned about. It's the, you know, the, when we, whenever we waive the bid process, nine times out of 10, it comes back to bite us. Has Bill looked at this? Lee?
I don't see any reason the city solicitor would look at a.
Well, he's gotten, he's gotten involved before in the past where he said that wasn't a unique opportunity to waive the bid on him, regardless of whether the person lived in the state or the company was laid into statewide or not. You know, I believe our, our first dump truck came from Michigan, our Packer truck came from Michigan. You know, so I mean, regardless of whether or not there's another vendor in the state, you know, I just don't want this to come back, that's all. Because Bill has a different opinion. Counsel Agnew?
I did purchasing for many years, and we don't, we didn't ever check to see who was qualified, who was the only, you know, sole source or something. Usually do a bid, and you have certain requirements, send it out, you get them back, and a lot of them don't qualify because that can't meet the qualifications. So I agree with the mayor. I don't think it's a good idea to be waiving the bid process. But here we are.
We can have, we can refer this one and have Matt come in and explain his rationale.
Matt is available online if you'd like to hear from the Vote Works Director.
I have a question.
Counsel Green.
So in this case, other than the fact that there's only one vendor in Maine, what makes this unique or non-competitive? That, that's the rationale given for.
Director Skene, can you hear us okay?
He's muted.
You're muted, sir.
Okay, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just like Brian said, it is unique. There's only other, one other like unit, but that unit has just had the attachments. And it's like Counselor McCormick said, we are trying to get the best bang for our buck. It, it's a super versatile piece of equipment, extremely unique. It can be used year-round. So while it will be used, purchased with cemetery investment funds, we'll use it citywide. So I think it will be, I'm certain that it'll be very valuable to us.
Anyone else? Counsel Finch?
So, Matt, what are the, you said it's the only one that has these 35 attachments and that there's one other one and it doesn't have those attachments. What is the impact of not having those other attachments with the use of the vehicle?
Yeah, it's just, it's just not quite as versatile. The reputation of this Ventrack is superior to the other one as well. It's, you know, it's anecdotal, I'll say, but we've asked around for folks that are using them, municipal and college, and they are just extremely happy with the durability and the versatility of the Ventrack.
I don't know that that meets the uniqueness standard.
Counsel Agnew?
Yeah, I just, whenever I've had things like this before, it's interesting how other vendors will find a way to say that theirs is, you know, theirs fits the bill. I guess it bothers me that those people weren't offered the opportunity to figure out how they might fit the bill. This, was this, was this a straight RFP or was it a, for proposal? Or was this a straight request for a price on a specific item?
It was a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, right? It was, it was a direct solicitation. We didn't do the RFP.
Yeah, it's always wise to do the RFP, and then you get people who can try to meet the proposal of what you're trying to accomplish, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we're at where we're at, if it's within budget. But I would just, I guess, caution the administration to, don't do this. You know, there's, there's always going to be complaints. There's always going to be people who are troubled by this. So that would be my advice.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Moving on to Resolution 188, 2024.
Approve the amended sale of city property policy.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Brian, you want to kick us off with this one?
Yeah, I think, well, our finance director's been joining us all evening. I think I'll throw it over to Christina. She has a nice memo in the packet for you, also outlining. Again, most of this is just adjusting numbers with inflation. They haven't been revisited in quite a while. But Christina, if you want to.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Was reviewing the sale of city property and the standards by which such property gets sold and the values. And the values were significantly low, and there didn't seem to be clear guidance for departments and, I don't know if that went out, for departments and people to follow. So rewriting this is an attempt to have a clear policy on how we dispose of, and this excludes real estate. This is not for real estate. This is for, it could be office furniture, it could be culvets, it could be older vehicles or equipment. It's to outline what procedure that we take when something comes up of that nature and who has the authority to approve it at which level. So. Is there any questions on this policy? Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on to, what is this, where are we at? Order 189, 2024.
Acceptance of a 2023 FEMA assistance to firefighters grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Attorney Chief, do you want to explain what this is?
Yeah, I can.
You have an opportunity?
First of all, I'd like to thank one of our battalion chiefs, Ian Pelletier. He took it upon himself to write this. It is on. Can you hear me now? One of our battalion chiefs, Ian Pelletier, took it upon himself to write this grant. Basically, this is the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. We try to put something in every year. One of the big things we looked at last year was the fact that our, our washing machine, which actually is a gear extractor machine that we use a lot, only does two sets of gear at a time. It's over 20 years old, so it's well past its life cycle. And before the thing breaks and costs us a lot of money, we thought, hey, we'd throw our hat in for a grant, lucky enough to get it. So this will give us a washing machine that, instead of doing just two sets of gear, will now do up to six. And it will also give us a brand-new cabinet dryer. They should be plug-and-play right into the spot that we have them now. We're also going to try to keep our old set just as a backup and also as, when, when we have a big structure fire, you can imagine that we have a lot of gear to wash at one time. It takes us usually two to three days to get all our gear washed, so this should hopefully speed up the process. So it's a $31,819 grant total. So it's $30,303.80 from the feds. Our portion is $1,515.20, which we will take right out of our operations budget.
Perfect.
Outstanding.
Yeah. That's great. Fantastic. No way to bring my laundry.
I don't know if I'd put my personal laundry in there. You got to imagine what this thing is washing away. Obviously, cancer initiatives in the fire service right now is a very big deal to us. The firefighters are, are twice as likely as a normal human to get, contract some type of cancer. And one of the big ways to try to prevent that is to keep our gear washed. I remember back in the day when I first started washing, like, the dirtier your gear, like, the better it was. So every time you grabbed it and you put it in your vehicle, you took it to school, like, your hands would be, like, covered in soot. Well, that's bad. I mean, that is, that is a carcinogen that, that soaks into your body and, and causes cancer. So this is the, one of the best ways that we can try to prevent cancer in our, in our firefighters.
Perfect. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. First reading, all those in favor? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Order 190, 2024.
Accept the Stanton Foundation grant to establish a second K-9 team.
Move to adopt.
All right. Welcome again.
So since the, the establishment of the Waterville PD K-9 program, Sergeant Dinsmore and K-9 rigs have responded to 110 K-9 calls, which in comparison to other teams that graduated from their same academy class is nearly double. Additionally, Sergeant Dinsmore and rigs are not available 24/7 as nobody can be. We, so we still rely on other K-9 teams from out of town to come in when they're not available. This has led us to believe that we could really benefit from a second K-9 team. Sergeant Dinsmore did all the research on a grant opportunity to add an additional K-9. So I'm going to turn it over to him to speak to the grant that he has requested.
As Major Woods just said, I've looked into a grant. It's a very familiar grant to us. It's the Stanton Foundation grant, which you guys so graciously and generously accepted about three years ago now. They have an opportunity for a second K-9 program where we would, and we have been awarded $32,000 to get this program up and off, off the ground and establish a second team here. I've put together a PowerPoint and direct your, your attention to the, the screen here. And if you have any questions as we go, please shout them out. And there's a spot for questions at the end as well. So as, as I already talked about, Riggs is three years old, about three and a half now. He's from Slovakia. He's dual-purposed in patrol, which again, has tracking, it's article searches, evidence searches, and drug detection. In two years, K-9 rigs has responded to 111 calls. This is probably, I've updated this PowerPoint probably 20 times and the number keeps going up. I think we're at 113 now. Those called for service include missing persons, drug sniffs, search warrant executions, evidence recovery, criminal apprehension tracks, K-9 demos, and much more. K-9 rigs has enhanced the equality of life within the city of Waterville and the surrounding communities by locating motor vehicle burglary suspects, assisting in locating OUI suspects, recovering firearms. We visit schools and organizations for skills demonstrations. So, you know, in the city of Waterville, you know, we do a lot of K-9 demonstrations. We go down to Thomas College, we talk to those kids down there. The demonstration we did here was very brief, but we show his, his skills, all of them, that, that he can do. It's a great tool for their, their law enforcement class, even if they're not in law enforcement. People just, just love to see the, the dogs work. It's fantastic. Outside of that, we visit Camp Post Guard. We do that with the Maine State Police K-9 Training Unit. So it's, it's been a really great thing to get our name out there and show what the city of Waterville has to offer. Some notable cases I just wanted to talk about real quick. In August '22, a motor vehicle was stolen in Buxton and recovered in Somerville. The residence in Somerville was burgled by the same individual who stole the vehicle from Buxton. And then they stole the keys and some other items off the counter. And then they stole the keys and some other items off the counter, stole that vehicle from Somerville. That vehicle ended up in Waterville. We located that male subject after a pursuit and a successful track, resulted in two arrests and closed out cases here, Somerville, and Buxton. October 2022, a distressed female wandered out of the woods in Oakland requesting help. She was shoeless, had very little clothing on, and had spent the previous night in the woods. She wandered back into the woods before the Oakland Police Department could arrive. They requested us to do a track. We located her within 20 minutes further into the woods, and she was taken to the hospital for medical treatment. In November 2022, Kevin Barr robbed the Goodwill Industries in the concourse with a firearm. He fled the area after displaying the firearm. And during the track for the suspect, K-9 Riggs located the firearm, clothing used during the robbery, which was concealed under a pile of wood in an alleyway. Kevin pled guilty to DNA collected from the weapon after the, the clothing was taken to the lab and it matched his own. Without K-9 Riggs, that case probably would go unsolved today. In December 2022, K-9 Riggs tracked a bank robber in Oakland. K-9 Riggs located the suspect's jacket. The same individual had robbed Waterville's Camden National Banks just days prior. In 2023, of January, K-9 Riggs apprehended a wanted fugitive out for a pursuit and brief foot chase. The subject was wanted for numerous felony domestic violence crimes. And in April 2024, K-9 Riggs tracked and apprehended a subject that had committed a home invasion in Skowhegan. Again, another case here, this was just days after passing certification for drug detection. We had a sniff of a vehicle called in by an off-duty officer. That officer observed somebody in the vehicle using drugs. We located the vehicle and we did a, K-9 Riggs did a sniff, not we. And we were able to get into that vehicle. We see six firearms as well as illicit drugs. Huge Caesar. That's six guns off the street not being used to victimize other folks, so. The benefits of a K-9, you know, it really adds an extra tool to assist in detection and seizure of drugs, contraband from illicit drug traffickers. K-9 can detect the odor of imprinted narcotics in ways that we cannot. The ability to locate endangered or missing people, as well as the apprehension of wanted fugitives running from law enforcement. The known presence of a K-9 within the community will deter some from engaging in criminal conduct and can help defuse a potentially violent encounter. We have the ability to conduct community outreach for area schools. Right here, this is down at Thomas College last fall. We had done some drug detection, we had done a couple article searches, just to really show them what he's capable of. The kids love it, the teachers love it. One of the teachers is an ex-K-9 officer from Texas, so it's right up his alley. It's, it's a great tool to reach out to them and kind of funnel some of those folks into our ranks, hopefully. We provide training to area technical centers. We go to that yearly, put on another demo there, control his skills. We go to the colleges, as described, and outreach for adolescents exploring careers in law enforcement. Law enforcement in Maine is, is seeing an increase in crime, all right? Source-level drug, source-level drug traffickers are targeting and taking advantages of Maine and its citizens. Resources, specifically K-9s that deter drug crimes, are low. Outside of Waterville, there's, there's us, there's a K-9 for the Kennebec Sheriff's Office. Those are the only two dogs in the area that I'm aware of that are currently certified in drug detection. Kennebec's dog is, is getting old and will likely retire very shortly, and that will leave just one K-9 to do the work of two. Even, even two in the area is, is quite low. How is this achieved? The Stanton Foundation, again, they awarded us, three years ago, $32,000 right off the bat to get this program started. That money helps to, for the purchase of the dog. It helps for the purchase of housing, equipment, all the stuff that you need to get this, this program up and running. In addition to the $30,000, they give us $1,100 a week while the handler's at training. They pay for the training course, both patrol and drug detection. So that's all covered. All 22 weeks of training is, is covered through the Stanton Foundation. And that's money, that's added above the $32,000. So $32,000 is given to us upfront, and then the other money trickles in as you, you become certified. To this day, three years on, almost three years on, we still have funds from the original K-9 grant that was awarded to us to get our first dog program started. So we're operating under that. The food all comes out of that. If he needs a new tug and he needs new ball, again, all of that is purchased through the Any questions?
Counsel Green.
Could you just explain the difference between, when you say patrol versus drug detection, can you just explain that? I'm just trying to picture if Riggs is out on the street or if, you know, what, what's his day like?
Yeah, so patrol certification level is, is you start with obedience. You start imprinting them on human odor. So, and I meant to do it earlier tonight during the presentation, we start imprinting on odor. I carry stuff like this in my pockets all the time. I carry this, I carry a lighter, chapstick. We throw it on the ground and we ask the dog to find it. That helps with tracking later on, which also becomes a patrol-level certification. Building searches, we have people that are breaking into places, stealing copper. Copper has become a hot item again. And there is the bite work that's involved in that, criminal apprehension, that type of stuff. So that, that is all included in that 14-week patrol certification that we do right over here in Bassamboro.
Okay.
Counsel Gagnon.
Yeah, I guess my concern, I think this is stuff terrific, but my concern is the overall long-term expense to the, to the budget. And, you know, I heard you mention, or in these presentations, you know, a few times, Town of Oakland, Fairfield. I mean, do they contribute to this effort? And, you know, I assume that when they call and ask for the K-9, we get, we respond.
Yeah, if I'm on duty, I go. If I'm at home, I go. And what I would, what I would say there is Oakland's problems are not just Oakland's problems. Fairfield's problems are not just Fairfield's problems. They all come here.
I understand the argument.
Let me finish.
They all come, the, the folks that are engaged in this type of activity, they all come here. They come to Waterville. It's, it's a large service center. These problems, it's, it's not just for Waterville. We're, we're community-based. We, we want to see others outside of the city limits thrive and increase the quality of life there as well.
So I guess my question is, does, when, does Oakland pay when the dog goes to Oakland to fur-co?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So as a service center, we're picking up the cost of things that are happening in our area.
Yes, we are.
And, and maybe this is a question for the chief, but somewhere along the way, it costs the city money, even though we receive a grant. You know, I've heard the expression, like, sometimes you can't afford a gift. And I guess I'd just like to know, or maybe not right now, because you probably don't have the numbers in front of you, but I suspect there are associated costs with this. So we're, you know, if we, if we know what that number is, then we can know looking forward. Because if this is something that's going to cost the city money in the future and we've made this investment, taxes are going to go up because they have to cover those additional costs and things. And while everybody might think, this is worth it, I mean, there's a lot of things that are worth it. And meanwhile, you know, homeowners continue to get blasted. So I'm, I'm the guy that's really concerned about homeowners and keeping people in the city and keeping people in their homes. And I get so many complaints about what taxes are, you know, in the city. One reason or the other. The state does things, then they take them away and whatever. And, and I don't mean to pick on you about this, but it's just, you know, it's just one of those issues, I guess, that, trying to figure out what this is going to mean to us in the long run.
Sure.
I have a question very quickly, because we all know that, you know, mutual aid among first responders is important. This might be a question for you, chief. When, say for instance, there's a structure fire somewhere else and you guys get toned out for mutual aid, do they, do they bill or do you guys just go?
You just go.
Exactly. I can't, I can't stress the importance of, of a K-9. I can't, you know, obviously, we, we have a responsibility to the city of Waterville, obviously for taxes and for lowering costs of living. However, we also have a responsibility to keep them safe as well. So I'll be voting yes.
I can, I can kind of answer the question on the, so the grant covers everything except for a stipend that we pay the handler, and he can probably speak to, and I think it kind of goes to your question too, the day in the life of, of K-9 Riggs. He's working with the dog every single day that he is not working at the police department. He doesn't, that dog does not eat a single meal without going through training at home with the dog. So that's, that's what we, we pay the, we pay a K-9 stipend to the handler because of the extra work that they're putting in off duty, and that's the only cost to the city other than callouts. And having a second dog would reduce the number of callouts. If he's on duty, there's, it's just his regular wage that we're paying to send him over to Oakland. He's getting paid that whether he's in Oakland or in Waterville. And if we add a second dog to the team, there's more likely, we're more likely to have a dog on duty and not have to call one out from home, costing overtime to get them to come out, you know, in addition to their, you know, on their time off.
I mean, because if you guys are, say for instance, on a, you know, there's a situation that requires a track and a K-9 isn't available, you're going to still wait anyway for somebody else with one to show up, correct?
Yeah.
So I mean, so it'd be, you know, kind of.
I, I can say that we've had to call dogs from as far away as Topsum before, you know, so the longer, if you're going to conduct a dog track, and again, he can speak more to this because he, he went through the training, but, you know, especially in the city, that scent that the dog is going to follow is going to dissipate over that hour it takes us to get a dog here from Topsum. The quicker we can have a dog there, the more likely the track is going to be successful.
So question, are there times, I guess, when we haven't had a dog in the city of Waterville where it would have been useful, that, like, where you weren't available and there were no other dogs available? And it would, like, I'm trying to figure out what the demand for the dogs is in Waterville and what the impact of not having one is. Like, status quo being maintained or are there things that, like, are actually being missed where we would greatly benefit from having a dog?
There are times where we have not had a dog available. Again, I try to make myself available as much as I can, but there are times when I just can't respond for whatever reason. And you have dogs spread out all throughout the state. Bangor sometimes is the closest dog. Again, as Major Woods said, sometimes Topsum. And we lose the benefit of having that dog. Even if we don't find the person on a track, a lot of times we're able to recover property that has DNA on it. And that really gives us a huge step in solving a otherwise unrelated, unsolvable crime if we can't find the guy or the gal that's committed the crime.
So has case completion gone up in the last three years since getting the dog?
I.
That's such a hard question. I know, you gave me that such a gator question.
I've done some research, but that's, that's not, I couldn't tell you the answer to that.
Counsel McCollum.
Simple math, if he's made 100, simple math, he's made 110 to 150, 115 responses in a year. He's responding once every three days. He's, we use that dog once every three days. 365 days a year, 115 calls. So once every three days, we're using that dog at a minimum. And we're not done with this year.
Counsel Gagnon.
I think I heard an answer earlier that I liked, but I want to clarify. If we approve this grant, then you're saying that other than the stipend, it covers everything for the life of this dog, of the city?
The grant covers, they give us $32,000 to use for food, equipment, again, the housing and all of that. That $32,000, after it's expended, it doesn't replenish. So again, we've operated under this, this grant for nearly three years now. There's still money in there that, we're buying food and the aforementioned stuff that we need. When that is depleted, then it, then it will come out of the budget of the police department. We do have options, and I am working with people right now that are, businesses that are, are working to make donations. So that might be in, by way of food, to really cut down on that cost, so.
Anyone else? Counsel Green.
I'll just say that I appreciate Counsel Gagnon's point, but I'm really struck by the quality of the cases that this dog is responding to. And, and I think that's certainly very important right now with the number of drug cases we're seeing and all kinds of other things. So I'm, I'm going to vote no. I think I wouldn't without the grant, but given that you've done the work to procure the funds, I, I think it's a good investment.
You vote yes then? No, no. You're voting yes?
I'm voting yes, sorry. Yes, no?
Maybe so.
You set him such a conviction.
Yeah. It was like a backhanded compliment there. I'm like, I'm going to, I'll tell all these great things and I'm still voting no. Fair enough. All right, anyone else have anything else?
Thank you for clarifying.
No, you're fine. It doesn't count until we, we do it real, so as long as we're good there. All right.
No, I would just echo what everybody just said, and, and how I feel is, Waterville is going to be ahead of the game. And I like that. Yeah.
All right. Well, this is a first reading of an order, so all those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to ordinance 191, 2024.
amend the purchasing ordinance, Chapter 61.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just an overview again.
Please.
So similar to the solicitor property, this is again kind of adjusting for inflation. So this would be purchases or leases 20,000 or less, department directors are authorized to approve. Anything in excess of 20,000 shall require a competitive bid process, which is subject to review and approval by the city council. So again, this is just adjusting some numbers for inflation. Language is also added on mention, lease proposals with multiple-year payment terms shall indicate both the annual payment and total lease costs is added in. Christina's here also. Christina, anything else you wanted to add or?
I do want to add because right now, under the current policy, we require purchase requisitions from departments on items that have been included in the budget, that are standard items, that a lot of them you also had bids on for heating oil or fuel or salt and sand paving, those type of things. And so you've approved it in the budget, you've approved the contract, but yet when they bring a bill in, it still has to come through me for signing off, then it has to go to the city manager for signing off, then it comes back down, and then we generate a purchase order, which then goes back to the same department for them to sign off and attach the invoice and then resubmit to our office to pay something that has already been approved probably five or six times. This creates a lot of extra work for the purchase of fuel, salt, and sand, things that are already approved as part of the budget. I think this will go a very long way in eliminating those things, but still bring items over a certain amount that may be concerning when you get to the last quarter. Is there enough money within that budget for something of that size? You know, at least I would be looking at it and Brian would be looking at it and saying, where are we and where are we going to end up? So it still gives a review. So it still gives a review of those larger size, but it gets rid of a lot of very unnecessary paperwork. So I just wanted to express, that was part of the reason for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the word is redundant. Okay. Anyone else? Any other comments? Counsel Gagnon.
I guess I would just caution that, well, first of all, I think it's my understanding that this doesn't include capital items, equipment or capital equipment.
This does not include anything that is required to go out to bid that is not included as part of the previously adopted budget.
Okay.
So if they, if they have your permission to go out to bid for a vehicle, they do the RFP, the bids come back before you, and you accept that price, when they submit that invoice, we are still going through that process.
So this policy is, is really aimed at operating expenses?
Yes, and things that, it's only for things that have already been pre-approved.
Right. Okay.
Up to that amount.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we are ordinance first vote, all those in favor? Excellent. And I believe with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.